Well, of course we do.
No ex parte contact or bias, just content.
Roger.
Seven o'clock.
Let's get rolling. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting for the 22nd of March, 2010. I call this meeting to order at this time and ask for any public comment on any items not listed on the agenda, and seeing none, then we'll move forward into our first item, which is adoption of the Planning Commission meeting minutes for February 22, 2010. And do I have any changes, or comments, questions, or motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt the Planning Commission minutes for February 22, 2010.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pete?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lozwa?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
Minutes are adopted.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll move into our first hearing, and this is a legislative hearing, and this is L-10-01. And at this time, as it is a legislative hearing, we don't need to go through the legal issues, but we will ask if there's any conflict of interest on any commissioner's part regarding this, other than the fact that we're all involved.
I have none, none for me.
Nor do I, all right. The only point I will make is that we brought this up two years ago, or three years ago, I guess it was, and had discussion as a planning commission, and that was it. And it moved on forward to the city commission. Okay, all right, Tony?
So I'll be presenting L-file 10-01. It is a proposal to reduce the number of planning commissioners from seven to five. Oregon Municipal Code, subsection 2-24-020, controls our committees, including Planning Commission, and in that chapter concerning membership, it states that the Planning Commission shall consist of seven members to be appointed by the mayor. The Planning Commission has been functioning with five members for at least seven years, if not longer. There have been, probably around eight or nine years ago, we did have a time when we did have seven members, I believe, but that did not last for more than a year at the most. We've had difficulty recruiting individuals to commit to the time and energy that it needs to sit on this planning commission. This matter was discussed at the city commission work session earlier this year, and they did request that it be brought forward for their consideration, and as we walk through this process, see if there are any concerns. I will enter into the record two items. The first is an email from Mr. O'Brien that's on your dais, and the second is an email response from Mayor Norris to Mr. O'Brien, so both of those have been placed on your dais, and they'll be entered in the record as number exhibit A and...
Exhibit one for the email from Mr. O'Brien, and exhibit two for the email from Mayor Norris.
Thank you.
When considering such a legislative action, we fall under chapter 1768 of our code addressing zoning changes. The first addresses that the proposal should be consistent with the goals and policies of the comprehensive plan. In the staff report, we focused on the goals and policies from section one of our comprehensive plan, which deals with citizen involvement, that we need to have a citizen involvement program, that the citizens have an opportunity to participate and comment on all land use applications, as well as comprehensive plan amendments that move forward through the legislative process. Notice has been given to the citizen involvement committee, neighborhood associations, it's been posted at City Hall, the library, the Pioneer Center. Other than the email that you received today, we've received no other comment concerning this proposal. In considering tonight's hearing, you'll just be making a recommendation of either approve or disapprove to the city commission. They will have an additional hearing on this on April 7th, if it is moved forward tonight with either a recommend for approval or denial. In reviewing the goals and policies, the reduction in the commission size from seven to five does not appear to conflict with any of the goals or policies of the comprehensive plan. Public comment is always welcome and accepted, and as we are functioning now with four commissioners, we are still advertising and whatnot to fill that fifth place, that fifth spot. In the staff report, we identified several boards and committees where public involvement and public participation is included within the city, including the Budget Committee, Citizen Involvement Committee, Neighborhood Associations, Historic Review Board, Library Board, Metro Enhancement Committee, South Fork Water Board, Transportation Advisory Committee, Planning Commission, Urban Renewal Commission, Urban Renewal Budget Commission, Oregon City Budget Commission, Sister City. We also have several inactive committees, including the Arts Commission, Hazard Mitigation Committee, Historic Trails Committee, Natural Resource Committee, Parking Advisory Committee, Tree Committee. So we have several opportunities for public involvement, so we believe that the goals and policies of comprehensive plan, section one, are being met. We did not identify any other sections of the comp plan where this request would have any impact on those goals and policies. Criteria B concerns public facilities and services, this will have no effect on that. The land use authorized by the proposed are consistent with the existing or planned capacity and function of transportation, obviously it's not applicable, and statewide planning goals shall be addressed. If the comp plan, comprehensive plan does not contain specific policies, we have specific policies concerning public participation. We are recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the amendment to chapter 2.24 of the Oregon City Municipal Code for consideration by the city commission at their April 7, 2010, public hearing. Now, if you have any questions, be happy to try and address them.
All right, Tony, thank you. Okay, any questions to Tony at the moment? Now we'll open it up for any public comment. Anyone like to make a comment, other than this email received? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and bring it up to the Planning Commission for discussion. And I'll leave it up to the gentlemen.
Yeah, I would just, after reviewing the memo from Tom O'Brien, he makes a number of claims that I can't substantiate. One of those claims is that there have been numerous occasions where decisions have been made without a quorum, and that's never occurred in my tenure here, and what, I'm in my fourth year, I believe, this point.
Yeah, that, just to be specific, that's never happened in seven years, just to be clear.
Uh-huh. And I am not affiliated with any developers or the development industry myself. I know, let's see, Commissioner Alaizwi, he's an architect, but that's in the city of Portland. I don't, I think he has disclosed any ex parte contacts that he's had in all of our meetings that he may have had, you know, any, well, when he had to disclose that information, it was disclosed, and the public was invited to ask questions about his associations, and it's never been a problem. I don't think any of the rest of us have had affiliations with developers. Other claims that were made, talking about the decisions that we are making not being sound, or less than, less than good, you know, I think he suggests that decisions that are made by this group are subjective, and I don't believe that's quite true. Our decisions are based on the findings that we read and we discuss in the staff report, as well as the information that we learn on our site visits. So I understand that a citizen's got a, has an issue with this, but frankly, I don't understand all aspects of it and don't agree with most of the claims that are made here.
Thank you.
I guess I'd just have to echo Commissioner Stein's comments. I certainly have no connection with any developer whatsoever. And further regarding Commissioner Lozwa, excuse me, Commissioner Dan, being an architect, I think that, I found it to be very helpful to have that insight from that perspective, and certainly had never had any concerns that anybody's had any relationships that skewed or biased their opinion that they didn't disclaim, so.
I think it would also make a lot of sense to change the number of persons on the commission from seven to five. As the mayor says, it's difficult to staff. Does require quite a bit of time and effort to review all of the, all of the agenda items for each meeting, and I don't think it would compromise the integrity of the commission at all. I think it would probably make, make sense in this day and age. If there is a time in the future when the city decided that we needed to have more people on the planning commission, of course, the numbers could change back up in the future, but I think at this point, it would make sense to decrease the number from seven to five.
Okay, thank you.
I don't have too much to add, other than Mr. O'Brien's assertions. You should be very careful what he says. As far as I'm concerned, to say that I am somehow on the take here, you should be very careful, Mr. O'Brien. I don't have much else to add, other than we've always had a quorum, I've been here seven years. The purpose for this body, as we've mentioned before, is we are, we are not staff, we are just regular folks. We are you, we are the people out there, so we're just working on your behalf, working. We're volunteers on your behalf to try and see that the city is, is designed and moves forward in a physical state that is reflective of good growth, and we are really blessed that our planning staff is on that page, and many times their decisions that they're recommending are in line with us because they're doing the right thing. So it's, it makes our job actually pretty simple most of the time. We have had disagreements in the past when we don't feel that it's going in the right direction, and again, we kind of stand, we kind of stand up to that, so.
That's about all I have to say about it, other than a pretty offensive email, Mr. O'Brien.
Okay, well, I'm not, I feel the same way, and I'm not going to say anymore to Mr. O'Brien, other than if you are interested and you want to participate, we have an opening on the Planning Commission, and we would be happy to review your application, and we'd love to have another person on here, and if you feel like this is only going one way, feel free, please come on down, we'd love to talk to you. And I agree, I think it's a great opportunity, which should have been done seven years ago, when we first brought it forward, because I think it makes sense. I am very proud of this group, we've done excellent job, in my opinion, and I believe the city is better for it, and so we'll move on from there. And I'm open for a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 10-01.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Pete?
Commissioner Lozwa?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. We'll be forwarding that to the city commission for their discussion on April 7th. All right, let's move on to our next order of business, which is a work session. So are we going to close this meeting, or do you want to...
We'll shoot that resolution real quick.
Oh, I said resolution, so sorry. We are looking at Resolution 10-01. This is a resolution supporting the city of Oregon City's application for a transportation and growth management grant to update the Oregon City Transportation System Plan, and I will turn that over to you, and then I guess I get to read it, huh?
Certainly, yeah. So we are requesting the Planning Commission's support resolution to be submitted to ODOT as part of our grant application, working with Ms. Kroschaw and our Public Works Department, putting together the grant to Oregon Department of Transportation to update our transportation system plan, which was last updated in 2001. The grant is for approximately $250,000, $260,000 plus additional in-kind work by city staff in terms of materials, meetings, review, and whatnot, everything that's needed to update that transportation system plan. We've also received a resolution of support from the city commission at their last city commission meeting, so with that, we'd be happy to request your support in applying for that grant from the Oregon Department of Transportation.
Good, so let's talk about this. I mean, what do you think?
I think it's a great idea, and I think, I think I could support it 125,000 percent.
I don't have much to say either, other than that. I agree.
Yeah, this is a great opportunity. We can't let things like this go by. This is an opportunity for us to take a very much needed, and if you've been listening to these planning commission meetings for the past seven years, like we have, you've seen where the biggest problem we have is transportation. This is an incredible opportunity for us, and if we don't take advantage of it, shame on us. So I would say, before we go through this, I would like to take a vote and decide what you'd like to do with that, and then we'll move forward and read the resolution. Well, I guess I need a motion, don't I? A motion and a second. So do I have a motion?
Yeah, a motion to, to adopt Resolution 10.01, which is a resolution supporting the city of Oregon City's application for a transportation and growth management grant to update the Oregon City Transportation System Plan.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Pete?
Commissioner Stein?
Aye.
Commissioner Groner?
Aye.
Commissioner Lozwa?
Aye.
Chair Powell?
Aye.
Resolution is adopted.
Very good, I'm going to read this into the minutes. This is a Planning Commission Resolution Number 10-01, a resolution supporting the city of Oregon City application for a transportation and growth management grant to update the Oregon City Transportation System Plan. Whereas the city's mission is to build a sustainable community that promotes public health and safety, economic growth, and protects our availability, environment, and uniqueness depends on a cost feasible, efficient, and multimodal transportation system. And whereas Oregon statewide planning goal 12 requires the city to adopt an updated TSP as an amendment to the city's comprehensive plan to respond to Oregon City's changing economic, social, and environmental conditions, as well as meet all statewide land use goals. And whereas the updated TSP will return the city to full compliance with state laws and administrative rules that govern the requirements, and will achieve consistency with state, regional, and local land use and transportation plans. And whereas the city's vision will be integrated into the policies enacted to implement the new TSP and the city's mission to build a sustainable community, will be included on every aspect of the plan. And whereas the updated TSP will guide the coordinated growth and efficient transportation investments that will support local and statewide economies. And whereas updating the city's TSP will align our transportation plan with our land use plan, our economic development plan, our fiscal resources, and will provide for a balanced multimodal transportation system, will preserve or enhance state facilities, will increase convenience and availability of alternative modes of transportation, will provide alternatives to major infrastructure investments, will increase the use of available lands, and will reduce emissions through reduced automobile vehicle miles traveled. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Oregon City Planning Commission as follows. The Planning Commission supports the city of Oregon City application for a transportation and growth management grant to update the Oregon City Transportation System Plan. This is read at a regular meeting of the Planning Commission, held on the 22nd day of March, 2010, and attested to and signed by Tim Powell on the 22nd day of March, 2010. Planning chairperson. Thank you very much. That's a wonderful thing. All right, we can close our regular hearing, but our work session?
Yes.
Okay, so if there's no more, any other questions, or any business at this time in the Planning Commission, then we will close this meeting.
Now, after, after we go through the presentation tonight, I'd just like to give you a quick five-minute update on what's happening since the last time we met, in terms of land use applications and whatnot.
We'll still be on tape, so we'll get all that. Okay, very good. Thank you very much.
And I'll go ahead and have Pete.
So I will give an introduction for Duke Castle, and it's my pleasure to introduce Duke. He's part of the Natural Step framework, and their group that has been working on sustainability in Oregon since 1997. They are doing training throughout Clackamas County and throughout the metro area, and they also provide training to a lot of businesses and other groups. I've conducted one of the trainings already, and so has Terry Bankhead in the city manager's office, and the Natural Step has provided guidance to our fledgling group of staff members that is working on sustainability for city operations, which is tentatively dubbed the Green Team, and our goal with this is to at least come up with a, a plan for sustainability in city operations, and we're working closely with the Natural Step on that. Duke's done a lot of trainings, he's got a great experience, and without further ado, I'll let him introduce himself.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, welcome.
Yeah, I'm just curious, have any of you heard of the Natural Step?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. You're the architect, right?
I am.
Yeah, right, good, good, that's great, yeah. I'd like to make this informal, I mean, I, you know, I realize we have all this stuff here, but I would welcome interruptions, or whatever, you know, would help all of you. And what I was intending to do was talk a little bit about what sustainability is, give you some of the driving forces behind it, show you the need for, do you all have that these slides?
We will, in a moment. Flip it, there you go.
Flip your toggles.
There you go.
Got it, got it.
We're ready.
Good. Talk a little bit about what sustainability is, what the driving forces are, the need for a framework to guide efforts on it. I want to give you some examples of what people are doing. Initially, I'm going to show you some business examples, but then I'm going to get into community examples, and particularly, Commissioner Dan, I don't think I can pronounce your last name, so I...
Lozwa.
Talking about buildings, because that's been the greatest impact around sustainability, is what, what happens in the architectural field. And then I'll give you an idea of a process that's being used by a number of communities to help develop a sustainability vision, a strategic vision. So with all that said, before I even get into it, give me some feedback about what's on your mind. I mean, what is it in particular that any of you want to see addressed in a session like this?
In my mind, I'm thinking of ways to improve Oregon City Municipal Code, to help to achieve some of these goals, and to, using the code to implement some of these principles.
Okay, good, good. I'm definitely going to give you some examples of what communities are, communities are doing, and so if there's an interest to pursue that more, you know, I can give you more information that I may not have tonight, pass that on later. What about the rest of you? Is there anything on your mind about any of this?
I mean, we've been dealing with it through a lot of the different green, the applications, and everybody wants to be green, and what, you know, what green really means, and what level of green is green, and, you know, and it would be, it is interesting for me to try and tie that all together and see what it really means, and what the cost, you know, to do it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because, you know, we may all have a great vision about what we want, but if there's no money to do it, and, and also, how does, how does the green concept, if you will, work into the city's current infrastructure? And, you know, sure, we can put nice swales in, but if it's not going to get carried away by the current sewer system, how's that going to be picked up, and how's that going to be covered? So those are some things, it's just, how does it work within the existing system that we can make it work and be more efficient?
In fact, you're bringing up a very good point, and that is, you know, is being sustainable and being green the same thing? And in fact, in a moment, I'm going to toss that question back to you, but what about the rest of you? Chris?
I'm curious to hear some of the examples of communities that have moved towards that, and also maybe some of the communities that, some of the stumbling blocks that they went through in getting there, or maybe even not getting there.
Yeah.
So that we can, in moving to that direction, avoid some of those.
It's interesting, I, this summer, I just did some work with the city of McMinnville, and they, I don't think they had what you have up here, words is build a sustainable future, but they were getting people requesting, citizens coming up and saying, you know, what are we doing around sustainability? And the question was, well, what does it mean? And let me just, let me see if this works, yeah. The first question that comes up is, what does sustainability mean? And let me just literally read this, because this is the definition most people use, it comes from the Bruntland Commission, which is a UN commission that was developed around the Rio Conference in 1992, and it says, "Sustainable development is development that meets the needs of the present without compromising the ability of future generations to meet their own needs." As you can see, what it's talking about is, we're talking about sustained life, we're talking about this going out from generation to generation, and most times I find, almost nobody disagrees with this definition. You know, the question is not necessarily how do you define it, how would you know if what you're doing is accomplishing this? And the state of Oregon, Governor Kitzhaver signed an executive order in 2000, and let me just read this. Sustainability means using, developing, protecting resources at a rate and in a manner that enables people to meet their current needs, and also provides their future generations can meet their own needs. That, so far, that's the same thing as the Bruntland Commission, but they've added to it the last sentence. Sustainability requires simultaneously meeting environmental, economic, and community needs. That's the other aspect of sustainability, that people will talk about a triple bottom line, they're saying it's more than just the ecology, you know, we could literally save the earth and destroy the economy, we don't want that, you know, we want a healthy, yes, we have to have a healthy environment, because if we don't have that, we don't get anything else, but we want a healthy social system, we want a healthy economic system. So when you see definitions about sustainability, you'll see these two aspects, you'll see the intergenerational issue about it. What are we doing today that allows our children and our grandchildren to have the same quality of life? But you'll see it expanded beyond just the environmental aspect, looking at a social component, looking at it, you know, from a, from an economic component. So I haven't found anybody that really disagrees with this, but then I come back to my earlier statement, how do you know if what we're doing meets this? And in fact, is being sustainable and being green one in the same? And let me just quickly toss it back, what do you think? When you hear those, do they seem like they're the same thing? Do you think they're different?
I think, I think a lot of them are the same things. I think, I think if you look at sustainability, it's something like utilizing our current resources before we go get new resources, but why are we, why are we not grinding up our old streets to put a base down of a, of a new street?
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, that just makes sense.
Yeah.
And why? Maybe because the cost is too high, it's cheaper to buy the other stuff.
Yeah.
I don't know, but you know, there's, that, that to me is also green.
Yeah.
So there's some things that maybe, maybe aren't so, or so they're sustainable that aren't so green. I haven't, I'm not there yet, I don't know what that would be.
Yeah, yeah.
But I'm sure that there's probably some examples of that.
Okay, good. Anybody else, which, just thinking aloud, what do you think? Does it seem like it's one in the same, different?
I think the definition of green is actually expanding, so to speak, to assume some of the social or economic objectives, not just environmental green, but I think green becomes a synonym for sustainability more and more.
Yeah, no, good. Chris, or Dan, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, I just think that this, this last sentence is right on it, because it's the balance of all this stuff, and early on, you know, I'm a lead architect, so I got involved in this really early, but...
Right.
You know, early on, it really was just, you know, how was it manufactured, you know, that, that green component of, but really is, it really, this is now really becoming a balancing act.
Exactly, yeah.
And you can really see it. So I agree with this statement 100 percent.
Chris, any reaction?
I agree, I think they, everybody hit it, and it's a broader, growing term that's outside of the defined specific scope of recycling the immediate product.
Yeah, you know, it, green is good, green is good, green is recycling as much as we can, doing the least damage we can do, but we could do those things and not be sustainable. Sustainability says there's a threshold that we have to meet or exceed, or life does not go on. And green can mean a lot of things, I mean, it's a color, it's a political party, there's a certain polarization around the term, but most of the times, it's talking about tactical things, it's focusing on details, it's talking primarily the ecological aspects of this discussion. And there's even a mindset, the way we talk about these things, that we talk about doing the least damage we can do, trying to minimize our waste, tread lightly on the environment. The implication seems to be that just the fact that we humans are here is the problem. And, you know, and it's like, if we weren't here, this would all be solved. Well, sustainability wants a, a system where it is okay for us to be here, so it is an expanding definition. And when we talk about things like minimizing waste, how do you know if what you're doing meets that criteria? You know, it's very hard to, to measure something like that. So I want to suggest that sustainability is a broader issue, I mean, I think we've touched on this. It's looking at things from what we call a whole systems point of view. What do I mean by a system? Your body's a system, you know, you've got a brain, you've got a heart... You know, you've got a brain, you've got a heart, you've got lungs. Those parts of your body can be health and your body may not be healthy. Because it's the interaction of those things, it's the flow of those things. So sustainability is like that. We can look at different parts of this, but if the flow, if the interaction of these different parts aren't working, the system doesn't work. That makes sustainability a strategic issue. And, you know, you're familiar with these terms, but strategy and tactics come out of the military realm. Strategy is the grand plan, the big picture point of view, tactics are the details, they fit together. But sustainability says we have to back up and look at things from the big picture point of view before we get down to the detail level. And as we've touched on, sustainability is more than the ecological part of this. You know, there's a social component, there's an economic component, that, you know, we want all three of these. And in fact, it isn't, the problem is not the fact that human beings exist, it's that we don't understand the basic principles. We've forgotten, let me say, the basic principles nature's used to design a sustainable planet. If we knew those principles and aligned our business practices, our community practices with those, we could be sustainable and it's fine that we're here. So part of this is just a terminology, a recognition of this. And if we get into sustainability and understand that they're, that we're looking at things holistically, there is a way of measuring this. I'll give you an example. On the green side of the ledger, we talk about minimizing waste. But when people talk about sustainability, they don't talk about minimizing waste, they talk about zero waste. You can measure that. And in fact, one of, I do a lot of workshops, and one of the questions I toss out is, how long do you think it's going to be before a company sends nothing to a landfill? I'm just curious. What do you, what do you think?
The company, I guess. Yeah, I'm thinking, I'm thinking, I mean, you know, in our current, 25, 30 years.
It's already happened. Epsom Portland here in town has sent nothing to a landfill for the last seven years. Most, many of the car companies, GM included, are sending nothing to landfills. Now, they're not at zero waste. In fact, Epsom Portland, they recycle 90% of their material. The other 10% is sent to Salem and is burned. And as you get into this, you realize there's a systems issue there. Burning stuff, putting carbon dioxide out isn't necessarily the answer either. So Epsom would not say they're at zero waste, but they have reached the place where they're sending nothing to a landfill. And there are a lot of companies right now that are doing that. So, you know, it is possible to set what sound like, I'm thinking pie in the sky, but very idealistic goals, and you begin to realize, actually, they're very doable. They're very doable. And people are further ahead than most of us realized. Well, we've been doing, as Pete mentioned, we first started this in 1997. We put on some workshops out at Nike and brought the Natural Step from Sweden, and I'll tell you a little more about that. And for the, I'd say the first eight years, this has been, this is a great area to do this in, but the rest of the United States, you know, it's not like a lot of people are doing these things. It's been in the last probably three years with global warming, with rising energy prices, that there's a rising consciousness about this. So I put Time Magazine up here because global warming, you know, it's a news, a news issue. Or Newsweek, it's a news issue, and then you begin to see that it's even a nonpartisan issue. You have a very Republican governor doing some of the greenest stuff around doing this. You know, still news, whoa, wait, Vanity Fair, you know, it's got a green issue. And you begin to realize this thing's going mainstream. And the time I really knew this was a serious issue was when sports fans were told our ballparks were going to go underwater if we don't deal with this thing, you know. So, well, the good news is that climate change has brought all this to the forefront. The bad news, though, is we could solve climate change and not be sustainable. Climate change is a symptom. And there's an interaction from these issues. In fact, what do you think the next issue is right behind climate change that we're going to be dealing with? Could be dealing with it here right now, in Oregon City.
Water.
Yeah, right, right, exactly. I live in Lake Oswego. We, in Lake Oswego, and this is not a statement of pride at all, we consume twice as much water per capita than any of the other areas around here. So this last year, we put interior rates. The more water you use, the higher your rate goes up. Well, I'll tell you, it had an impact on us. I mean, I sat down and looked at our water bill, it was going to be $600 in, over a two-month period if we didn't deal with it. You begin to see there's an interaction from these issues. Well, let me put this out first. This, this comes from the kind of stuff that Al Gore's done, you know, where you see, there is temperatures bouncing around. But you're right, water's the next issue, and the important thing is to begin to see the interconnection between these issues. And here in Oregon, one of the examples is the snowpack. That the snow, the snowpack acts like a battery. It stores the water in the winter, and then as spring comes and summer, the water melts and, you know, the farmers get it. Well, with global warming, it's melting sooner than the farmers can use it. It's beginning to change the system. And so we begin to see there's an inner relationship between global warming and climate change and water. And we look at water and you look at something like fish, and we, as human beings, have a history of finding a particular species of maybe a fish and fishing it to death. Well, and here in Oregon, the fishing fleet, about half the fishing fleet's been idled about four or five years ago because we've overfished the bottom fish. And we know the issue around salmon that's gone on for years. And, you know, last year, the salmon fishing from the Klamath River down in Northern California was basically cut off because we've just, we bottomed that out so much. And it's not just fish. The UN has a panel, I can't remember now, IPCC, inter, it's 1,300 scientists, these are the same folks that got, that shared the Nobel Prize with Al Gore. And let me just read from their report a couple of years ago, three years ago. "Approximately 20 to 30% of plant and animal species are likely to be an increased risk of extinction if increases in global average temperature exceed 2.5 to 4.5 degrees Fahrenheit." Right now, the estimate is that's probably low, we'll probably lose 40%. Well, you can begin to see the inner relationship of these issues. And in fact, I would say that in the years that I've done this, I don't think I've ever talked to a group that didn't know there was a problem. And I would have to say that the unstated mood in the room was one of despair, you know, and confusion. It's overwhelming. I mean, you look at all this stuff and you say, oh my God, how do I make sense of this? We use a metaphor called the funnel to try to help people wrap their minds around these issues. And we'll say that there are two trends that are on a collision course. One of those, if you look at the bottom, we have a world population that's about, I think it's about 6.6 billion now. And not only is that population growing, but a lot of those folks want the kind of affluent lifestyle that they see here in the West. So that says that there's going to be an increased demand for goods and services for some time. And from just a pure business standpoint, because my background's in business, you know, that looks great. The bad news, though, is we're satisfying that demand by depleting resources faster than they can renew themselves. So if you project those trends out, the place where they cross, at least metaphorically, is where we're unsustainable. And even though we're seeing symptoms, we're not at that crossover point right now. If you go back to the left, where you see that vertical line, think of us back to the left there. And what that is telling us is, we have time to act. The system has not collapsed. And, but, the longer we wait, the fewer the options, the higher the cost. It's in our best interest to act now. And the changes that are required won't happen overnight. So you don't want to wait until this funnel gets more constricted. In fact, I will tell any business or any community, if you don't deal with these things, I will guarantee you, your community is going to hit the wall of this funnel. And you don't want that to happen, because when it does happen, the cost is exorbitant. And even though I guarantee that you will hit it if you don't deal with it, I can't tell you when. Who would have thought General Motors was going to go bankrupt? Now, I don't think it was entirely due to these issues, but I think they contributed to it. And so it's in our best interest to start to deal with these things now, to take the, to put the plans together that are going to take decades to play out, so that we don't have this thing happen. The question becomes, can we avoid this? Can we open this up like a true funnel? Well, one of the answers to this comes out of Sweden, from a cancer researcher, and let me back up here, from a cancer researcher. His name is Carl Henrik Rober. Carl Henrik was Sweden's leading cancer researcher, he's also a pediatrician. As he was growing up in Sweden, he was seeing more and more development, and, you know, more land was being used and being encroached. And he began to ask the question, so when does this stop? You know, when, when is enough enough? And he began to get into discussions about people, these issues, environmental discussions, and he ran into all the debates we've heard for the last several years, you know, is the earth warming up, is it not? Do I use paper, do I use plastic? This guy's a scientist. And he's a bright scientist, he could make sense, could make sense of this. And he thought, how do laypeople ever understand what to do about these environmental issues when scientists can't seem to agree? And yet, he thought, wait, as a scientist, there has to be some fundamental science that determines if what we're doing leads to a sustainable society. He wrote down what he thought it was. 21 drafts later, he and 50 of Sweden's leading scientists said, yes, if we follow this science, we will be sustainable. If we don't, we won't. So what I want to do is, I want to take you through the thought process these guys went through, show you the science. And out of this, Carl Henrik crafted what he calls the system, system conditions for a sustainable society. And there are four of them. And he uses the phrase, "the natural step." In other words, he's saying, this is the natural thing for us to do, to follow these principles. So I'll go through the science, I'll show those to you, and we can, we can certainly talk about it, but then I'll, then I'll give you some examples, I'll show you what people are doing with this stuff. So the discussion here probably doesn't start with the idea that the environment has changed, but maybe our understanding of it has. And I'll give you an example. When I was a kid, I grew up in a suburb of Chicago. What I heard about the environment was smog in LA, and what I heard about it was, it was caused by cars, something could be done about it, it was, it helped, didn't go away. Wasn't just the cars, it was even charcoal lighter fluid. And some of the solutions, like putting tall smoke, tall smokestacks in the LA basin may have helped LA, but didn't do much for Phoenix. People began to realize it wasn't just a few local issues, it wasn't just a few sources, that it was global, it was diffuse. And if those factors don't make this complex, there's often time delays. It took 40 years from the time the man who invented DDT got a Nobel Prize for it until it was banned. In other words, it took us 40 years to recognize the negative effects of DDT outweigh the positive. And there are positive effects. So when Carl Henrik looked at this, he said, you know, the reason we get lost in all these debates is we're down at the detail level where it is too complex. We're not smart enough to figure this stuff out at that level. His feeling was, we need to move upstream. We need to understand the fundamental principles that drive those details. And maybe if we did that, we wouldn't have to be an environmental scientist or any kind of scientist. Maybe we'd have a common language we could all use. And he was looking for, he was looking for consensus, he was looking for the kinds of stuff that we all agree on. And he used the phrase, he was looking for what he would call unalterable or non-negotiable system conditions. Nobody designs a building and doesn't use the law of gravity, right? I mean, that's self-evident. Okay, well, that's what Carl Henrik was looking at. He was looking at things where you wouldn't have to be an architect, you wouldn't have to be a scientist, we all say, oh yeah, we agree on that. Now, let's, let's move on, let's figure out how to use that. Well, when he got into this discussion, in fact, after the Natural Step came out, one of the things that began to come up is particularly around sustainability, people would say, well, oh, well, there's the Natural Step, there's triple bottom line, there's natural capitalism, there are all these great frameworks. Oh, wait, how, which framework do I use? It's so confusing. And what Carl Henrik knew, and Paul Hocken developed natural capitalism, and Bill McDonnell's cradle to cradle, Mathias Wagner did Eco Footprint, they realized these are not competing frameworks. They complement each other. And so they got together and they wrote a paper. And in this paper, they developed a process to help people understand how to think about sustainability from a system's point of view, and then how to understand where you choose one of these tools, at what stage you choose them. So they came up with a five-stage model here. And a good way to explain this is Carl Henrik's a chess player. So he would say, if you've never played the game of chess, you wouldn't go down to number four, the action level, you wouldn't start moving the pieces around until you knew something about the game. You know, what are the rules? What's the point? All that kind of stuff. So he would say, before you play the game of chess, the first thing you've got to understand are the rules of the game. You know, there's a chessboard, there's pieces, they, certain ways they can move around. Okay? Great, I understand the rules, I understand the nature of it, what's the point of it? Well, the point is, you know, checkmate, you capture the king. Okay? Well, this looks like a fairly sophisticated game, you know? It is. I mean, I'm not a chess player, but you know, there's strategies to open the games, strategies to close the game. And he would say, before you ever play the game, you want to do your homework. You want to understand the rules of the game, you want to understand the point of it, you want to understand it from a strategic point of, point of view. Now you play the game. Now you get down and actually move the pieces. Because it is a sophisticated game, there are books, there are classes, there are computer programs. We want to play the sustainability game. Most people start to play the sustainability game at the action level. They get down and they'd say, well, what about our recycling programs? What about this? And they get lost, because it's too complex a game, until you've gone back and understand the rules of the game. And that's what Carl Henrik was trying to develop here. So he would say, before you play this game, the first thing you've got to understand are, what are the basic principles nature used to design a sustainable planet? And what constitutes winning in this game? And we need to do those things before we get down and play the game. Now, I'm going to assume that Dan loves science, but I don't know, the rest of you don't have to have loved science in this. I mean, maybe all did, maybe didn't, I don't know. You're a scientist, aren't you? Is that right? Is that right?
No.
Oh, I thought you were a biologist.
No.
Oh, okay, 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 well. Here's the good news. The science these guys used was not rocket science. This is the kind of stuff most of us had in high school chemistry and physics class, and there's four different concepts they looked at. But it's important to understand this, because this, what Carl Henrik is saying is, this is the science that underlies sustainability. And if we understand this, we'll know how to play the game. And the first scientific principle he looked at is, sometimes it's referred to the first law of thermodynamics, but it's the basic law of conservation of matter and energy. And what it's saying is that the fundamental building blocks of the universe, matter and energy at its most fundamental level is not created or destroyed. The atoms we've got today are the same ones we had a year ago, yesterday, a year ago, a million years ago. They can be put together in all kinds of combinations to make all kinds of stuff, but matter and energy at its most fundamental level is not created or destroyed. There's some implications of that. If we look at energy from a system's point of view, say we stood on the moon and we looked at the earth, we would see an open system, because we'd see the sun out here radiating in and heat radiating out. But when we look at matter and the earth, we see basically a closed system. You know, maybe a meteor comes in, a little bit of dust comes out, but the stuff we've got is the stuff we've got. So when we consume something and throw it away, there is no away. All we're doing is taking stuff from one part of the planet and we're putting it someplace else. And because of the second scientific principle here, which is the second law of thermodynamics, the concept of entropy, which says, given enough time, everything disperses, matter and energy disperse. If you have a cup of coffee and you pour cream in your coffee and you don't stir it, you know, if you wait long enough, it'll spread evenly throughout the cup of coffee. The same thing's happening globally. Pesticides being sprayed in South America are showing up in polar bears in the Arctic. Well, Carl Henrik looked at this and he said, you know, we can't throw anything away, and no matter where we put it, eventually it's going to spread around the planet. Then what is it that we're consuming? And his conclusion is, what we're consuming is the concentration and structure of matter. It's the way the atoms are put together. Gasoline has value because oxygen, carbon, and hydrogen atoms make up a gasoline molecule. When we consume the gasoline, the gasoline disappears, but the atoms don't. We've turned that into other substances, carbon dioxide, carbon monoxide, sulfur dioxide. We've taken something that had positive economic value, gasoline, and now we have to pay to clean it up. Well, you lift events and you can't throw it away, no matter where you put it, it's eventually going to spread around the planet. And just in the process of living, we're breaking down the concentration and structure of matter. What restores order? What sustains life? His conclusion was, that it's basically green cells, through photosynthesis and sunlight, that begin to restore order to the system. You plant a seed in the ground, in healthy soil, in healthy water. Sunlight comes down as energy and the, the seeds begin to take atoms and recombine them into a plant. And animals eat the plants and we eat the animals. And there's a life cycle that goes on with this. Well, Carl Henry is saying, okay, if this is the basic science that nature used to design a sustainable planet, how did it, how did nature do that? You know, what, how did, how was this science applied? And as I mentioned before, one of the key aspects about sustainability is looking at things from a systems point of view. So when Carl Henry looked at this, he said, there's some certain design principles that nature used to take that science and apply it. One of it is, nature knows this is a closed system regarding matter or mass. So nature's designed a system where waste from one species is food for another. Everything is in closed loops. Notice, nature doesn't have landfills. Nature's been dealing with zero net waste for some time. It doesn't mean that waste doesn't occur, but nature's designed a system to process all that waste. And process it within the earth itself. The other thing that nature did is, nature uses what we, what Bill McDonough, the architect, would call current solar income to drive this process. In other words, nature uses sunlight today. Fossil fuel is ancient solar income. Um, but nature is not depending on fossil fuels to drive the system, nature's, um, depending on sunlight. And as long as we have the sun, because we need energy, you know, entropy says things run down unless there's energy fed into the system. Well, sunlight does that. So nature's designed a system that lives on solar energy. The third, uh, uh, another aspect of this is that we're told that when the planet was formed eons ago, that the atmosphere, the biosphere, or the lithosphere, lithosphere is the atmosphere down into a few feet of the earth's crust, that it was not hospitable to life. Supposedly, the atmosphere had ammonia, um, methane, gases, heavy metals, mercury, cadmium, and lead. And over a long period of time, those things that today would be life-threatening are sequestered in the earth's crust. And there are flows that come out of the earth's crust into the atmosphere, but slowly, in geological time, they're balanced. So that we're left with an atmosphere of carbon dioxide and nitrogen and oxygen, to which life can exist. So Carl Henry looked at that and said, okay, nature took that science, designed a planet, applied that science to design a planet that could keep going as long as there's sunlight to drive it. But something's happened. Something's happened in the last couple hundred years to begin to break this system. What's happened? Well, he concluded that what's happened is being caused by human beings. Not consciously, you know, very few of us wake up and say, we're going to destroy a little more of the planet today, it's things we're doing unconsciously. But he concluded, there are four things we're doing to break the system. The first thing he concluded is, we're taking stuff out of the earth's crust systematically faster than it can go back, we're disturbing those flows. Um, fossil fuels is a great example, we're taking fossil fuels out of the earth's crust and we're burning it. It's not going back, it's fossil fuels. We've changed it, that's what the whole climate change issue is about, we're burning it, we're changing the levels of carbon dioxide. But notice, this doesn't say, don't take fossil fuels out. Carl Henry is saying, we don't want to take, we don't want to systematically take anything out of the earth's crust, we don't want to take anything out of the earth's crust systematically faster than it can go back. Something, some other things in small amounts, heavy metals, mercury, cadmium, and lead are life-threatening in very small amounts. But copper, copper's been extracted at a rate two thousand four hundred percent greater than what normally has occurred in the atmosphere. Is that life-threatening? We don't know, but if we continue to systematically build that up, the day we find it's life-threatening, it's too late. Now, I'll, I'll ask people, you know, can you think of a way, though, that we could continue to use copper and maybe not violate what's going on here? Let me just toss that back to all of you, what do you, what do you think?
Assuming you could recapture the amount of copper we've already taken out of the earth, to that extent.
Well, we could, we could recycle it, couldn't we? In other words, this is not saying, don't use copper. This is not saying, what is, what is, it is suggesting is, we probably don't want to keep using fossil fuels. We don't want to use scarce metals, like, uh, heavy metals, that's why we took lead out of paint, that's why we take mercury, because in very small amounts, those are life-threatening. But, but it's also saying, if we systematically build anything up, it could be life-threatening. How do we deal with that? Well, as I take the copper example, maybe we don't keep mining virgin copper, but if we could close the loop on it, because notice, that's what nature does, nature's, everything is in closed loops, we could continue to do it. Okay, well, let me, let me move on. Second, the second way he felt we were breaking the system was that we as human beings are creating synthetic substances nature's never seen before. Uh, things that nature has, has no clue how to process. Some of those are persistent and toxic, that's what DDT is. DDT is persistent and it's, uh, excuse me, you know, it's both, it's toxic and it's persistent. Even though most of the world's not using it, we still show, see it show up anywhere around the world. Um, as you know, in the lead rating system, we're talking about taking PVC out. And it's not that the vinyl in the carpets toxic per se, but the manufacturing of it can be, the disposal of it can be. And again, is this saying, don't make synthetic substances? No. What it is saying is, though, we don't want to create synthetic substances that systematically build up. So that says, we want to be particularly careful about things that are persistent. That vinyl carpet will sit around ten or fifteen years here, but when it goes in a landfill, it'll take twenty thousand years to break down. Um, uh, freon, um, you know, it's not toxic, and the, the real benefit of it was that it wouldn't break down, but as we know, as it escapes into the upper atmosphere, it begins to break down, uh, cause ozone holes. So, the second thing he concluded is, we don't want to create synthetic substances that build up persistent and certainly are toxic. The third thing he concluded is, we don't want to break these cycles. Since we depend on natural systems to restore order, um, sunlight and plants to restore order, we don't want to destroy the health of our soil, we don't want to cut down our forests faster than they can grow back. It doesn't mean we don't want to harvest forests, but it says, there's a balance about that, because we're depending on those systems to keep, uh, uh, the, the flow to keep everything going. These first three come out of the science I showed you, but he concluded there's a fourth thing. And this is the social aspect, because, um, uh, he's saying, it's very difficult to convince a farmer in South America, or, um, uh, in Indonesia, not to cut down a rainforest when they feel their short-term livelihood's at stake. So, we don't want to deprive, uh, we want to see that all human beings' needs, certainly their basic needs are met, so that they're not motivated to do things that may be in their short-term interest, but hurt everybody, including us. Out of this, he came up then with what he called, the four system conditions of the natural step. And let me just quickly read these, or do I have, yeah, okay, let me, let me read it this way. In a sustainable society, nature is not subject to systematically increasing, uh, number one, concentrations of substances extracted from the earth's crust, two, concentrations of substances produced by society, three, degradation by physical means. And what this is talking about is not degrading natural systems, not destroying the health of soil, not, uh, diminishing the number of species that are out there, not over-harvesting things. And then fourthly, uh, in, in, in the society, don't do things where people are subject to conditions that systematically undermine the capacity to meet their own needs. It's not saying, uh, uh, what kind of life people should live, it's saying, we don't want to undercut the ability to have whatever life that is. We, uh, think of Maslow's hierarchy, um, you know, if, if you've studied Abraham Maslow, he said, um, no matter where we live on the planet, as human beings, we all have similar needs, we all need food, shelter, we need safety, we need love, esteem, um, and then, and he said, there's a hierarchy to it. And at the top of that hierarchy, he talked about what he called self-actualization, um, or whatever your human potential is. Well, what this is saying is, ideally, we'd love everybody to get to the top of that pyramid, that means we at least have to make sure that people's needs are met at the bottom, that they're, they're subsistence. But later, it also means that they feel safe, that, that there's a sense of esteem. So when you look at the social component of sustainability, it's those kinds of aspects that you're looking at. Let me stop for a minute, because I'm going to give you some examples, let me just quickly, I'm going to give you some examples, but before I do, what's your reaction? Because this, these are the four system conditions of the natural step.
I have a comment, and, you know, uh, it kind of goes back to the, uh, the system, the need for the entire system to be considered, and, you know, from a city planning perspective, Oregon City could implement sustainability policies, but we would still have the county. And the county is working on sustainability too. Um, but we have huge flows of energy between these two entities.
Right.
And some are sustainable and some aren't, and it's really hard to get your eye, your, your head around it. Especially from, so it's sort of a, an equity standpoint, uh, uh, you know, if we're not all implementing the same goals, why are we doing this?
Um, so Pete, let me dialogue a little bit with you. Because what I hear you saying is, uh, I may be projecting this, but, uh, you look at this thing, you say, oh my god, this is overwhelming, and you know, I mean, for this to work, everybody's got to get on board.
Mm-hmm.
It's true. Eventually, everybody's got to get on board. However, everybody doesn't have to get on board today to make this work. Um, and I'm going to get into this a little bit, but that's why any organization, and I got into this because I come out of the business world, and I could see businesses following this and making money today, before anybody else got on board with this. And that there's a benefit, that, that, and cities can do this too, I mentioned McMinnville at the end of the presentation, I'm going to show you some, some things that the city of McMinnville could be doing right now, and they know this, because it's already in their, um, climate change report. There's ways you can save money today, that don't depend on Clackamas County doing anything right now. And you can begin to build a foundation. The other people will come around, because eventually, everybody's going to hit the wall of the funnel. You know? Now, the good news is, Clackamas, as you know, because of the group we've got working here, Clackamas County as a county is fairly enlightened about it, this whole region, you know, the Portland metro region is very enlightened about this.
Yeah.
So actually, what we've got now, the Oregon Business Council, um, holds a convention every, uh, January. And, uh, two years ago, three years ago, uh, they decided that sustainability was such a strong ethic here, that it needed to be the foundation of economic development for the state. This is the fifty largest businesses in the state. I mean, this is Intel and Nike and other folks like that. Um, they recognize that there's a business benefit today, that doesn't depend on everybody else getting on board.
Okay.
Same thing's true here, you know? Anybody else? What, before we move on, what's your reaction? Because this is sort of a theory at this point.
I mean, I think it's, I, it's very logical, the process, it makes perfect sense, it's, I, I do feel of, I'm a very small cog in this very large wheel, and I, and that's, and it's hard to get your head around all this, because you can take little bits, and I know that when I recycle my, you know, trash, or, and recycle my pop cans, and I know I'm doing a small piece of it. But it's such a minute piece, it makes really no difference, although, you know, maybe it's seventy-five minutes, but, it's just, it's so big, and to, for us, as a, as a body to sit and try to say, well, okay, how do we make this work? How do we, how do we get, how do we lay the groundwork, the foundation for the future planning commissioners in this community? And that's what I'm thinking through.
Okay. I'm going to give you some examples of that, and I'm, I'm, what's going through my mind is, you ever hear of Hot Lips Pizza in Portland? Okay. It's, they got five stores now, but they had two when they heard, first heard me do this. David Yatkin, um, looked at this, he decided he wanted his pizza business to begin to follow his principles. Well, what can a small pizza operation do? I mean, he wanted to serve organic food, you know, and, uh, he couldn't find organic wheat. Well, he drove up to Eastern Washington and found some farmers, um, and that were willing to do this. And he looked at the four system conditions, he wanted to work not only with organic wheat, he wanted local farmers. Well, Eastern Washington's a lot more local. Um, to make a long story short, those guys got on board, and they started an initiative called, uh, Shepherd's Grain. And they're now, they used to ship all their wheat to Japan. They're now starting to see that there's a benefit, and starting to work with local businesses here, um, and it, and it was David Yatkin, one little guy started this whole thing, and these guys began to get on board on this thing. Well, um, David's business has expanded, um, he does no marketing, he's been written up in the Wall Street Journal, he's been written up in the New York Times, uh, he's been featured on NPR, uh, HBO did a show on global warming, that he was one of the people featured in this. Um, he's, he's having a tremendous effect in his industry, and he's just one little person. The point I want to make is that, um, as daunting as this looks, it doesn't take much to start to leverage this and get other people on board. And we'll talk more about it, but, you know, and, as I said, you're living in the area that really resonates with this, I mean, this whole metro area resonates with this. And what about the rest of you? What, you look at these things, what do you think?
Well, I, I'm thinking how you, how often we do get stuck in that fourth level, or down at the, the action level, and what are we doing now, and, and taking this and being able to step back and look at the systematic level, and what are the opportunities for us to do that?
Yeah, yeah, good, good, yeah, yeah. I'm going to talk about the community of Whistler in a bit. They came around to the natural step because they were at the fourth, at the, the action level, and they got lost in all the details. And Carl Henry was skiing in Whistler, and they heard about the natural step, and it was, it was an eureka. All of a sudden, they began to realize, there is a way of thinking this thing through. What we're saying is, these are the design principles for a sustainable society, for the way Oregon City needs to be sustainable, for the way any business needs to be sustainable. Now, the power in this, um, well, let me back up. And let me stop, how about the rest of you? Paul, what do you think, when you look at this? What, what's your reaction?
The first three elements, um, um, of these, the first three conditions seem pretty straightforward, they're physical, they're limiting, simple to, to design at least, or to think about a closed system. The fourth one, um, it comes down to other people's manners, because greed in a society is going to break that every time. The guy that says, I don't have to play, and I think it gets back to what Pete was saying, I'm going to continue to do what I've been doing, because I'm successful, you go ahead and be good, you go ahead and be good, and I'm going to keep going.
Yeah.
And so, number four, I think, is the thing that you have to, um, you have to win people's hearts and minds, and that becomes the social, the social effort, the, the social component, I think, of a system like this.
Dan, what are you thinking?
Or you change the, the system of, by which you evaluate it, in other words, there's incentives to do it. It seems like that's the, the easy way out, actually, but probably the most practical in the Western world, anyway.
Yeah, for sure.
Is incentive-based.
Yeah, yeah.
And people will get on board and they'll make, make money. Hot Lipses will make money, uh, uh, you know, and I think that's, that's, that's the level at which I think the emphasis really needs to be placed, because that's, you don't really have to understand too much at the regular level.
Yeah.
That you've just sort of, you've got on a, you got on a train, and you sort of thought you were on a good train, but you actually are on a really good train, and so, you know, you're just along for the ride, and, and so I, I think that that, the, the last one, you know, number four, you know, just how, how people can change this, um, is really the key.
You know, it's interesting, um, as I've done this over the years, I've never told any audience, this is the right thing to do. Although, this is the right thing to do. You know? What I've said is, look, this is the smart business thing to do, it's the smart community thing to do. And Paul, your point's well-taken, uh, you know, about, there's certain aspects of human nature. Um, and I go back to a, uh, an experience that I had, I used to be a marketing manager at Hewlett Packard. And we would come out with products that nobody had ever seen before. And how do you market an idea that nobody's ever seen? How do you convince people? Because that's, we're the marketing issue here, in a way. Well, what I realized is, the market's not monolithic. You segment your market and you ask yourself, who are the guys that are going to get this really quick? Who are the early adopters? Let's market to them first. You get them on board, and then the next group, they call the early majority. And they see these guys have proven this out, it's beginning to work, and they say, okay, I can see a benefit. And the guys that maybe that you were talking about are at the end of this, they're called the laggards. You know, they may never philosophically buy into this, but when the rest of society's doing it, if they want to do business with the rest of society, they do it. And I saw that in Sweden. I went there in ninety-eight, um, and I, I could see that in Sweden, the folks that philosophically, nah, you know, they were coming around because everybody was doing it, you know? And particularly if you're a businessperson, you know, you want, and lead, I mean, you know, every architectural firm's got lead people, you know, you can't get business in this, this town without lead, right? Maybe you don't care about it, but you know, if you want business, you do, you go lead, you know? Maybe you don't care about it, but you know, if you want business, you go lead. I think that's the way your concern's going to come about. That, think about, in this community, who are the folks that are going to get this quickest? Who are the opinion leaders? Who are the others that people respect? Let's be talking to them. Let's get them on board. Because that's exactly what I've seen happen in other communities. Those people begin to do this, and others begin to come around and say, okay, maybe I ought to look at this.
And I believe that's why it's important for the city and the county and the government institutions to get on board with this kind of a thing first. They will be the early adopters, and by setting a good example, they're going to want, they're going to make other people want to come along with that. And as Dan says, a good system of incentives. And I think that kind of points right to the code questions that I think, you know, that interest me. Those are the things, you know, how do we incentivize this type of behavior in the city code? That's what's important to me. And I think that gets, that's what you do with condition number four.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Well, and the, what's going through my mind is, well, I'll say what I'm thinking. I feel honored to be sitting in front of you because it's this commission that could have tremendous influence. The stuff you're working on deals with this as much as anybody. You know, I live in La Causa, I did an all-day workshop with the planning department there and some of the planning commission people. They're going to be using these principles to update the comprehensive plan. What an impact that's going to make. What an impact that it's going to make. You guys have a tremendous opportunity, you know, to start to do this, to start to make that change. The only other thing I will say about this is, people will look at this and they'll say, okay, nothing on there is impossible, but boy, it's going to be difficult. And wait, the wording is negative. It's very important to understand what is different about the natural step from these other frameworks that I talked about, natural capitalism, lead. This is the only one that is non-prescriptive. If you look at the wording, it is not telling you what to do. It's telling you what not to do. That means you're free to do anything else. Any architect can build any building they want, as long as they don't violate the law of gravity. We can have any, we can do anything in Clackamas County or here in the city, as long as you don't violate this. The other frameworks, natural capitalism, are prescriptive. They're good. They're good. But they're not the only ways to achieve this. So it's important to understand that distinction. And in fact, what sets the natural step apart is, it's the only thing out there that I've seen right now that defines success. If we're going to play the sustainability game, this is how you measure success. Now, the weakness is, it doesn't tell you what to do. You still need other tools to do that. But as you're imagining a community, as you're planning different things, you could be coming back against these four system conditions and saying, how is what we're doing working towards alignment with this? If it is, great. If it's not, wait, maybe we ought to rethink it. This is the compass. This is the thing that guides you. And I put an economic thing in here because the natural step has two of the three. It has the ecological, and it has the social, it doesn't speak specifically to the economic. And again, coming out of the business world, businesses will say, I've got to make a profit. Absolutely, understand that. At HP, we had seven goals. The first goal was make a profit. But the way it was written was, it wasn't the reason we existed. Profitability is like health. If your body's not healthy, nothing else in life matters. But you don't live to be healthy, right? Well, at HP, we didn't live just to make a profit. We knew if we didn't make one, we couldn't do anything else. But it was the means to everything else. So as we do this, we have to have healthy economic businesses. But profitability is just one of those thresholds that we want to reach and maintain, but the economy is more than that. It's more than that. And as some people would say, the economy is a wholly owned subsidiary of the environment. You know, if we don't have a healthy environment, we don't get the rest of this. Okay. Well, let me, let me move on a little bit.
Can I ask one thing? Because I know one of the things I've always had a trouble with you, ever since I started planning and studying it and whatnot, is, and we talk about the Portland metro region in Oregon and their land use system and how innovative and progressive it is, and this UGB, this urban growth boundary concept.
Right.
And this kind of goes back to this concept of infinite growth. And that's a hard line we struggle with. We talk about our urban growth boundary and how great it is at, you know, kind of directing transportation and infrastructure investment and utilizing capacity. But it's not a hard line. And it's almost like, are we just delaying the inevitable of urban sprawl? And I've struggled with that one to this day, and how this kind of works into, I mean, do you ever, and this is something we'll probably have to, I mean, are there ever situations where, you know, it's, you have to break that closed loop because, you know, you're taking virgin land and you're putting a subdivision in? So is it okay that you're maximizing the capacity of it, and you're doing it in such a way? And how those two meld? Because it's almost, it's almost intrinsic that if you're taking this open land and developing it, it is gone. And are you breaking that loop? So that's another larger picture that, you know, I think we struggle with all the time when we write our land use code and trying to maximize densities and whatnot.
So your question is, is it okay to break the loop?
Well, it just seems like there's certain instances where you can't not.
Yes, okay.
And what do you do? And that's, is it kind of one of these, well, we do as much as we can to offset those impacts through maximizing the use of the land and designing it the best way we can and trying to reduce and reuse as much as we can while we go through that development process?
All right, let me think aloud with you a little bit.
Sure.
I used zero waste before, you know? Has anybody achieved zero waste of a nature? No. But do we need to achieve it at some point in time? Probably yes. We only have one planet. We only have one, one thing. So, and when we come to growth, at least material growth, we don't get more stuff. We've only got a certain amount of stuff. Now, does that mean we have to stop growth right away? Not necessarily. In fact, as I've gone through this presentation, people will look at this and say, this is flawed, you know? You don't have in your four principles that we need to deal with population. And I'd say, well, look, wait, look at that funnel. You know, if you don't deal with population, how do you get that funnel to level out? Someday, you've got to deal with populations. Oh my god, wait, that's a big issue. You're right. So we don't have to deal with population first. Population times affluence, let's look at the other stuff. Where do you start? You start with the low-hanging fruit, and the low-hanging fruit is almost always in waste. So when you start to look at anything, you begin to say, how can we be more efficient? We use land. How can we be more efficient? How can we design buildings that are more energy-efficient? You know? Someday, I'm, this is me just speaking personally, someday, yeah, I don't think the urban growth boundary goes on forever. You know, I don't think, but, is that going to be in the next 10 years, 20 years? Probably not. But if you look at these goals and you say, okay, if we're going to meet these system conditions, there are certain things that have to happen decades out. And every time we're making a decision, ask ourselves, is it moving closer? Is it helping to move us closer towards that goal? Does that make sense?
Good point.
Okay, okay. Let me keep going, I guess. And I want to be respectful of your time. I was thinking two hours here. Does that feel okay, or?
As much as you want, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, okay, good, good. Well, I mean, I love doing this stuff, so. Let me get back to the funnel. And as I said before, I'll tell anybody, particularly businesses, but I'll tell the community, if you don't deal with this, you're going to hit the wall of the funnel. And hitting the wall of the funnel is not just running out of a resource. Sometimes it's the health of your workers. IBM was sued by the women in the clean room in San Jose because the cancer rates for those women were higher than they were in Santa Clara Valley. And they suspected it was the chemicals that were being used. Sometimes it's customers protesting. Mats Lederhagen, the president of McDonald's in Sweden, turned on his TV set to see people protesting about the packaging they were using, Styrofoam packaging. And he thought, wait, we're the most environmentally sensitive McDonald's in Europe, probably the world. Didn't matter. Those people realized that wasn't good packaging. So Mats knew Carl Henry, he said, okay, help us out. Teach us about the natural step. Carl Henry came in, trained the employees in McDonald's in Sweden. And McDonald's is a public company, you've got to make a profit. And as I mentioned just a moment ago, you start by looking at the low-hanging fruit. You look at the things you can save now to finance the other stuff you've got to do later on. What do you think is the greatest source of waste by weight at McDonald's? You're getting close. Yeah, it's liquids. Liquids. Thirty-five percent by weight of what they were shipping to landfill was water, ice, Coke, Pepsi. So what did they do? They put drains next to every one of their bins, their throwaway bins in their stores, and said, you know, before you put that cup in the bin, empty the contents in the drain. Now, they, so now, the stuff that's going in there is not water. They cut the garbage mail by 35%. They changed their packaging, got rid of the Styrofoam, so that everything now, they were going to paper packaging, everything now could be composted. And the food, they went to all, their intention was to go to 100% organic. I was there in 98. All the dairy products at that time were, a third of the beef was, all of it was intended to be. So now, everything that could go in that bin could be composted. None of it had to go to a landfill. Well, it turns out, the farmers wanted to sell organic food, but they didn't have a big enough customer. Now McDonald's is coming around. They're closing the loop here. The farmers now had a big enough customer, and the farmers now could take the compost from McDonald's. And there's always a big educational component to this. So McDonald's started offering Happy Meal gardening kits with the compost from these bins with seeds. So they start to educate their customers about some of these processes. Well, here in the US, the first company to use this was Interface. And I don't know, Dan, have you run into them at all? Okay. The carpeting company there in Georgia, Ray Anderson, who was the CEO in 1994, was asked to stand up in front of us employees and talk about their environmental policies. And he was going to get up and say, well, I guess we meet all the regulations. And somebody gave, excuse me, Paul Hawkins' book, The Ecology of Commerce. And he read it, and he said it was like a spear in the chest. He realized everything they were doing wasn't sustainable. They were taking petroleum out of the ground, making carpet, vinyl carpet, sits around 10 or 15 years, goes in landfill for 20,000 years. Being a southern gentleman, he said, somebody better put people like me in jail. So he said, I want to be the world's first restorative company. Not just sustainable, sustainability is a threshold. Restoration is where you're beyond sustainability. So he set up what he called Mission Zero. Eliminate all negative impacts by 2020. He's a public company. How's he going to do that? Well, he looked for the low-hanging fruit. Low-hanging fruit's in waste. When they did this in 1994, they identified $50 million in waste in their company. The company was 600, 700 million in sales at that time. It's over a billion now. They saved that 50 million in the first three years. By 2008, they had saved $400 million. All of that money falls to the bottom line. That money is used to finance the other stuff that they needed to do. So he set up a seven-point strategy. The first was eliminate waste. The second was eliminate all toxic emissions. He was getting rid of all the smokestacks in all of his factories, going to 100% renewable energy, not reducing fossil fuel, getting rid of it. Closing the loop. Closing the loop. He looks at nature. He realizes, you know, we have a take, make, waste kind of thing. And he began to say, okay, how can I close the loop? Well, you go down to number six here, excuse me, number seven. He said, no, maybe you don't necessarily want to own my carpet. What you want is the service of my carpet. You want the look, you want the feel, the color. I will lease you the carpet. And it comes in tiles. So my people will come in, and they'll replace the most worn-out tiles every year. So your carpet's never going to look like it's more than a year old. And then, he's going to take that carpet back to his factory and use that as food for his manufacturing system. He's closing the loop on this. Anybody here have take-back legislation? Does that mean anything to anybody? Pete knows what it is. In Europe, if you are automobile manufacturer, if you're a computer manufacturer, a white goods manufacturer, you are responsible for your product forever. When your customers through with your product, they don't throw it into a landfill, they bring it back to you. So when the computer manufacturers knew they were going to start getting their products back at the end of their life, and if you were a computer manufacturer and you knew you were going to get the product back at the end of its life, what would you do?
Rethink your product.
Yeah, okay. So what might you do as you rethink it? What are some thoughts that might go through your mind?
Make it modular.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, lots of things you could do. Make it easy to disassemble. Don't put anything in there you don't want back.
Yeah.
Right? Right? Now, if you've designed your product so that it's easy to disassemble and there's good stuff coming back, hmm, probably not a bad thing, is it? And even though the electronic manufacturers sort of fought this, they began to see the benefit of this. They're closing the loop, and now they're cutting their manufacturing costs because they're getting their goods back, you know, at a cheaper price. Well, here in Oregon, a year ago, January 2009, we instituted take-back legislation on computers. And now we've outlawed, this year, you can't send, put computers and CRTs in landfills. And there's a whole product stewardship, in fact, I'm on a product stewardship task panel for DEQ, where we're rethinking other products about this. This is about closing the loop. This is about closing the loop. Another company, Collins Pine. They're the first company in Oregon to do this. They're a forest products company. They've had a great sustainability ethic for their whole existence. They probably didn't use that word, but Truman Collins in the 1940s recognized that the way they were harvesting the forest wasn't sustainable. They changed those practices such that they have as much timber today on the same amount of land as they did 60 years ago. They were getting awards for this, so they, Jim Quinlan, who's the CEO in 1996, heard about the natural step. He came back to his board, and he said, what do you think? And they said, yeah, let's try this out in Klamath Falls. So they went down to Klamath Falls and trained everybody in this concept. This is one of the things we've learned about how to successfully implement this. You train everybody in your organization. Doesn't have to be everybody the same day, all at once. You can start with certain people, but at some point in time, all city employees ought to be trained on this. Ideally, you want the whole community to be thinking. That may take a while. But, so they started, in fact, this was not the only factory, so they started with one of the factories, they trained all their workers, and the workers started coming up with suggestions. You know, ways that the kilns could be operated more efficiently. One of the workers came up and he said, you know, he said, I thought we were doing a pretty good thing. He said, we were taking the sawdust, and we were burning it, getting energy for it. He said, I thought that was good. But he said, I realize that I look at the cycle, that's not ultimately sustainable, is it? Because we're putting out carbon dioxide into the atmosphere. He said, here's how I think you can take this sawdust and put it back in the particle board. They took that suggestion, that one suggestion saved Collins Pine half a million dollars alone the first year. And they have almost no sawdust now that isn't recycled. All employee suggestions saved them a million dollars, in the first year and every year after that. Well, employees love this because this is not asking employees to work twice as hard with half as many people. This is asking employees to be innovative. It's teaching them how to think this way and using their creativity to find ways to make this work. So this comes from the Collins Pine training. They call it journey of sustainability. And I mentioned that sustainability is, requires you to look at things like a system. So they've taken this factory, and they've said, let's look at this as a system. There's energy that flows in, there's product that flows out. We sit in a community, we interact with water and air, and every one of those acronyms is an employee committee. Each committee is analyzing their particular flow against the four system conditions. And they've made an inventory of everything that's going on that is not sustainable. Then, they've done something we call backcasting. Backcasting's the opposite of forecasting. Forecasting, you take a trend, project it. But suppose you don't want that outcome. Backcasting says, "Let's step into the future, we do want, define it, and backcast from there to here." So they've taken these flows and said, "How could we redesign this system and eliminate every one of those violations? And let's not worry about the cost, let's not worry, does the technology exist, let's not worry about how long it's gonna take? Can we just articulate this?" They've done that. They know how to run that factory in a fully sustainable way. It'll take them decades to get there. But they know where their business is going ahead of their competitors, they know where the regulations are going ahead of DEQ. DEQ had me do the same process for auto repair shops. This is the key tool to successfully using the Natural Step, backcasting. Envision where you want to be. Use the principles to articulate where you are, where you want to be, and now you start to match it up. Well, communities, communities, and you see a whole bunch of them here. I live in Lake Oswego, Clark County's been doing it, Metro's been doing this for some time. Maybe a little history about Lake Oswego. I gave a talk at the City Council there, I think it was two thousand two. They adopted it as a sustainability goal, as you folks have done. They hired a sustainability coordinator. They established a sustainability steering committee. And then, the steering committee was all trained on the Natural Step. I took them through this backcasting process, and they developed a sustainability plan that envisioned what the city could look like, different parts of it, that would begin to align with these system conditions. I'll show you some of that plan in a moment. That's the foundation to now move out into the community. So the next thing they've done is they formed a citizen advisory board, you can see that was two thousand eight. And that board, last May, had what they called Sustainability Action Month, for the month of May. And the next one's coming up this May. And this May, I'm gonna be talking to the Chamber of Commerce, I'm gonna be talking to the Rotary. We're starting to take this out into the community. And the idea is that we want, eventually, we want the whole community on board. And as I mentioned a few moments ago, one of the interim steps in this, the staff doesn't change as much as councils do, and we have, you know, a lot of new council members that were, certainly were not there in two thousand two. So I've retrained the current city council. I've trained all the senior managers in Lake Oswego. But for me, one of the most gratifying parts of this was that all-day workshop with the planning department, who were so excited that said, "We want the comprehensive plan." And they went to Lake Oswego's planning commission, and my understanding is, the planning commission's willing to go along with this. So the Natural Step's gonna be used in the update of this, of this plan. This is the plan that the city itself adopted, you can sort of see this, it's on the internet, you can see all the different aspects of it. That's not very readable, but the idea here is, they've set goals, you can see a goal of twenty twenty-seven in energy, and you can see, it says zero net increase of carbon and greenhouse gases, energy sources are a hundred percent renewable. So they've put the stake in the ground, that was a twenty-year goal. And then they've set interim targets, what they want to achieve by two thousand twelve. They've looked at the current state, and then they begin to propose actions in the meantime. So the backcasting is, you're out here in the future, this is the reality of where you are today, what are we gonna do in the next twelve months, next five years, next twenty years? And you update that plan every year, so that's the process that they're, they're going through. Corvallis, same kind of thing. They formed a citizen, it was actually citizens that got this thing going. And I did a workshop down there, I think it was two thousand one. Their city council focused on this, they got a citizen sustainability coalition together in two thousand seven, two thousand eight. So they've come up with a community action plan, and you can see all the areas of focus in this plan. Very comprehensive on this. They held meetings with these citizens, and they had six hundred people at some of these. Luckily, they had an outside facilitator to help guide this. But, oh, I love this, because, you know, police department, what is the police department gonna do that's sustainable? Well, the police department went through their own backcasting session. And they found two things they could do. One was, they looked at the batteries, the most important thing, one of the most important things I'm told that a policeman has is his flashlight. And the batteries have gotta always be good, you know, and they have rechargeable batteries. They found a way to use capacitors that they could recharge much faster. It didn't take the long recharging time, and they didn't have to keep rebuying and recycling batteries. The other thing they had were flares that they're putting on the road. And you get all the ash and all the other stuff, they came up with an electronic flare that could be recharged. Police department loved this. When I did this in Lake Oswego, Chief Duncan came up to me and said, "Hmm, you know, maybe there's stuff we could be doing in Lake Oswego around this." This is too much detail, but it's on their website, and this just gives you an idea. They take a goal, they have metrics, they have strategies, they have actions, they have a timeline, they have identified the organizations that are gonna be doing this. So they did this a couple years ago. Dan, in the business you're in, when we first did this in two thousand seven, we had more people in the building trades join our network. We have three hundred members in the, it used to be called Oregon Natural Step Network, now it's just called Natural Step, because we're the headquarters for all the US. So we got a peer-running group of some architects, Dennis Wall from Gertie Needland, we got Charlie Stevens from the Oregon Department of Energy. And we said, "What would a building look like if it met these system conditions? Well, let's do a systems analysis." So we did a little flow chart here, you know, and we tried to look at this from a whole lifecycle point of view. A little overwhelming, you know, you look at this, and you see whether, you know, energy comes in, waste comes out, and we said, you know, it goes a little bit active pizza issue, you know, this thing is so big, where do you start? And we said, "Okay, let's just start with the construction of the building itself." So we did a flow chart, just like Collins Pine, and we took the flows in and out of this construction site, in the design of the building, and identified all the violations that were going on around the Natural Step system conditions. And then they said, "How could you build this building in alignment with those Natural Step system conditions? Not that anybody necessarily could do it today, but could we articulate what that would be?"
See where I'm going with my next slide here.
Yeah, okay, good. So we, I'm gonna go back here, we wrote a white paper. And I don't know, Dan, if you've ever seen this, but it's on the web. And basically, let me back up here. You start thinking closed loops, you know? When you build this building, you begin to say, you know, we're borrowing this material. Maybe we're borrowing it for a hundred years, but where did it come from, where's it gonna go at the end of its life? I'm told that in parts of Switzerland, you can't get a building permit until you've put together a recycling program for your building at the end of sixty-five years. In Boulder County, Colorado, right now, you can't tear down buildings, you have to deconstruct them. They're starting to think in closed loops there. We looked at energy, and we said, "Well, how much energy can a building use, you know, and four system condition? What would be a way that we could do this that would be fair and equitable?" And one of us said, "Well, you know, maybe if we made our energy budget such that it didn't exceed the amount of solar energy that fell on the building, everybody could do it that way." Not that we necessarily knew how to do that, or not that solar cells could do it today, but one, Paul Schwerer from PAE Consulting, actually sat down and looked at some of their projects and found that some of the schools they were designing in Medford actually already met that. They could take solar technology as it was ten years ago and meet that criteria. Well, as you know, today, people are talking zero net energy buildings, but ten years ago, this was almost, you know, almost unheard of. Some of the folks in that, in that setting, Dennis Wall from Gertie Needland went and took it to the brewery blocks, and they got lead as it was just getting off the ground. They went to the south waterfront, and, let me see if I have this, yeah. You can see this, the OHSU building, and Dennis came and said, "Okay, I want the Health Center, Health and Healing Center to be sixty percent below code on energy, I don't want to pay a premium." They did it, they did it. "I want to process all wastewater on site." They're doing that. It was, it's, it's the largest, at least it was, the largest lead platinum in the US. I think the Bank of America in New York City will be larger when it's completed, maybe it is completed by now. And, Dan, I'm sure you've probably heard about this, but the Living Building Challenge goes beyond lead. Lead platinum is nice, but it's not sustainable. It's not sustainable. And what's very interesting, when you start looking at Living Building Challenge buildings, you begin to see the same concepts that were in this paper ten years ago. And Jason McClellan, who heads up the Cascadia chapter, created this concept, and I don't think he ever even heard of the Natural Step, but it shows you the power of the science. We all gotta live with the same science. You don't have to know the Natural Step to realize that everything's gotta be in closed loops. So this particular building, the Oregon Sustainability Center, is right now slated to be built on the PSU campus. Zero net energy, zero net water. In fact, when Serra Architects and GBD did the analysis on this, they not only could live with all the water that fell on site, but they had excess water that they could use in the neighborhood around there. They're gonna have a living machine. A living machine is a way of processing wastewater. It doesn't use chemicals, it uses plants to clean up the wastewater. The Port of Portland, the new facility out at the airport, it's gonna have a living machine, it's the first one here in the Portland area. This one will have one also. You can see the other things that go on. Well, it's great, they have a building, but you know, we need to think beyond buildings. So in Portland, they're thinking eco-districts. And they're, they have five eco-districts designated in Portland, and these are tests, but they're saying, you know, sure, it would be nice if the building was zero net energy, but sometimes, you know, people aren't occupying those buildings, they're at home, how do we make this work? Well, let's think from a neighborhood standpoint. If all the energy in the neighborhood, you know, in fact, now maybe we have district systems, as they put in with the brewery blocks. Where we produce our share of our electricity, maybe fresh water, maybe we have organic waste and sewage processed here. Maybe we even start to have little, like victory gardens from World War II. This is actually one of the hottest concepts that's going on right now. And this is one of the things that draws people to Portland. People are coming in, Dennis from Gertie Needland and Clark Brockman from Serra were flown by the state of Oregon to China to teach them some of these practices. Logan Cravens from Serra and Clark were flown back to the United Nations, because the UN is remodeling their building around these principles. Portland, the Portland metro area, you know, is seen now as the epicenter of green building because of this. And in Portland, you know, Portland's ranked number, the most sustainable city in the country, and their greenhouse plan is, it's worth your reading this, because this gives another demonstration of how you take something like global warming, and you begin to look at all the interaction of things. You begin to see how all these things flow together. So when you start looking at the requirements of what this plan outlines, this is a plan for sustainability, built around neighborhoods. Multnomah County, economics, economics. Who's the guy, I'm blanking out, the guy that's taking over Multnomah County from Dan Wheeler? Oh, I, if he's watching the show, I apologize, because we know each other. But Jeff Cogan. Jeff has installed, had this, Multnomah County install a million square feet of photovoltaic cells. Now, PVs are expensive, but he worked it out with a third party, Sun Edison. So that Sun Edison is acting like a utility. And Sun Edison will own this for twenty years, and will sell the electricity back to the county at rates below PG and E, PGE. And the rates are locked in for twenty years, there's a three percent escalation. Wouldn't you like to know what your electric rates are gonna be? Wouldn't it be nice if you could just guarantee your rates weren't gonna go up more than three percent a year for the next twenty years? Well, that's what Multnomah County's done. Corvallis has done the same thing with two million square feet with Sun Edison. So here's a way where you don't have to have a lot of money as a city, you know, to do this. You can start to lock this thing in. Oh, you can see some of the other things here, I put the Fort Lewis thing, because the army was using the Natural Step, all their bases require sustainability plans. Let me go back to this planning process, this backcasting. We have an acronym, we call the ABCD process, and this is just a restatement of what I said earlier, but there's four steps to this planning process. The first is awareness training. That's what we're getting the mini version of right now. We do all-day workshops on this. That's what Pete went to recently. The B part is to do a baseline analysis. You look at something, you know, you look at city operations, that's what Lake Oswego did, by department. You, you do an inventory of what you're now doing in that department that's unsustainable against the four system conditions. Then you step into the future, and you create a vision of what that department would look like if it was fully sustainable. Then you backcast from there and say, "Okay, what are we gonna do in the next twelve months, five years, twenty years to move towards this?" That's the backcasting process, and you can see the four different aspects. What do you know about sustainability? What do we look like today? What would we look like in a sustainable society? Because we realize ultimately, everybody's gotta do this. And then what will we do today, and how will we prioritize this? We don't have time for this, but later, in our workshops, there's a methodology we use to help people sort out all the options, how to prioritize it. And you're always using this vision, and you're always asking yourself, of the options we've got, which one is moving me towards this vision? Which one is affordable? Because every year, you want to keep moving towards this vision of full sustainability. Well, one of the best examples of this is Whistler. I mentioned earlier, Whistler was, they were down at level four, they were doing the recycling and all that kind of stuff. They were getting lost. They heard about the Natural Step from Carl Henry when he was skiing there. So they took this, they took this into their city operations, but they wanted to take it into the community, and this goes back a little bit to Paul, what we were talking about earlier. They knew it was a bit much to try to convince everybody in the community to do this. So they started by identifying what they called the early adopters, the most progressive organizations in the community. Blackcomb, the ski operator, Fairmont Chateau, the largest hotel, the municipality of Whistler, the city government. There was a small business photo shop. I think there were five businesses, there were five organizations, the business, government, nonprofit. All five of those went through this ABCD process, over, I think it was ten months. So at the end of that, they all had a sustainability plan for their organization. They now could see not only how to make the organization sustainable, and could verify this, but because of their prominence in the community, they could begin to support the rest of the community and say, "Okay, we've tried this out, let's roll this out community-wide." So the next step was, they got a citizens' community together, committee together, let me, and they developed a plan where they said, "We want Whistler to be fully sustainable by the year twenty sixty." How do they define fully sustainable? Well, by aligning with the Natural Step system conditions. Okay, we're not gonna wait till twenty sixty, so we're going to set an interim point of twenty twenty. And you can see all the different areas, they developed strategies in every one of these areas. But let me back up here. It wasn't just the econ, I mean, it wasn't just the ecological part, one of the four system condition, one of the things they said was, we, not only do we wanna go to a hundred percent renewable energy and get rid of toxics, we want our workers to be able to afford to live here. So one of the goals they set in this plan was that seventy-five percent of the people who work in Whistler could afford to live in Whistler. Well, it's expensive, how do you do that? Well, they got the Olympics, in part because of this planning process that they went through. So they designed the Olympic Village such that it could be the basis for affordable housing. And indeed, now that the Olympics is over, it's subscribed, that's what it is. And that, the Olympic Village is, is gonna be fueled or energized by a hundred percent renewable energy. Ninety percent is gonna be waste energy from their sewage facility, the other ten percent's gonna be methane that's coming from a landfill. So they're moving forward on this, and do I have this? Yeah. They're not doing it alone. They now go out and they recruit different organizations to take different parts of this plan and take responsibility for it. So they now have a website where they have different actions, they show who the partner is, what the metric is, and the partners to report on how they're doing. This plan is updated every year. They're probably one of the best examples I've seen of a community doing this. They're very clear, they've gone through the backcasting process, they are on board, you know, on this. And the economics, they got the Olympics of this. And it's, I mean, essentially, my wife and I've gone up to Whistler more than once just to learn about this, because global warming, my God, snow, what are you gonna do? You know, I mean, it's beginning to melt. Well, they said, "Okay, you know, we're here all year round. Sure, we want people for ski season, but we like people in the summer, we like people in the spring and the fall." So they started to look at this, and they have an economic development plan built around ecotourism to get people coming all year round. The whole thing integrates together. So we come back to the system level, the five-level model. This ABCD process, the backcasting, is the key strategic tool to make this happen. Once you've done that, now you go down and you play the game. Now you understand what your recycling program is, but you understand how it fits in to, say, green building or renewable energy. You understand the system's nature of this. You've gotta learn long-term plan as to where you're going. And yes, it is sophisticated, so now, natural capitalism, cradle-to-cradle, lead, environmental management systems, all these things are tools that you want to use for this. Some, I got two slides I'm gonna close with, and then I would love your feedback about this. Here's, at least, here's my impressions of what I've seen in successful communities. One is, most successful communities have fully engaged community leaders well before a community-wide effort. You know, that's what Whistler's done, that's what we're trying to do in Lake Oswego, that's why I'm going to the Chamber of Commerce and other places. It takes time, I mean, you know, for somebody that likes... know, for somebody like City Council was 2002, and Corvallis, it was 2001. But I would, like Corvallis, their sustainability committee, the chair of that committee is the city manager. The members of the committee are the department heads, and every month, they sit down and report, you know, on how they're doing. Before you can get to the community level, you build, you build this up. You build it up. You build it within, you build it within city operations, you build it with the leading citizens. So, and you build with supportive activities. I mean, in Whistler, they had public lectures, they had a sustainability guide for businesses, they had a sustainability guide for the home, they brought, well, I said guest lectures, they brought other people in. They've all successfully demonstrated that this works. You know, before you get your community to buy in, to get a few people to do this, John Kisselver signed an executive order in 2000 to take the state of Oregon to sustainability by 2025. I trained his senior staff. He said the only reason he was able to do that was because of the businesses that we already had on board. That gave him credibility, you know, to be able to do that. And you develop a long-term, community-wide plan based on a sound sustainability framework. I mean, this isn't going to happen in my lifetime, you know. I mean, I'm not doing this for me, I'm doing it for my daughter, I'm doing it for other people here. This is going to go beyond our lifetimes. So it takes a long-term commitment. And so, as I say, you need to develop a system, you need institutionalize this. City councils will change. And when I worked with McMinnville, I said, the most important thing you've got to do is institutionalize this. If you're going to do it here, eventually it's got to be institutionalized, you know. And what that means here, I don't know, but it's got to become part of your culture. With a number of the firms I've worked with, it has become part of their culture. Nike, I haven't worked directly with Nike, but I know from Severn, it's become part of their culture, you know. They have their Considered line now that takes these concepts in, and eventually all their products will have this in. And the cost thing, I mentioned this earlier, because I know how tough it is economically. But you look for the low-hanging fruit. And when I talked to McMinnville, they already had a global greenhouse gas plant that had identified some of the savings you're seeing here. The plan already showed how they could reduce their energy to firehouse by 43%, how they could cut their silver energy by 60%, how they could save $13,000 in the parks and recreation. Some of the things I've mentioned, solar cells with Sun Edison or methane gas. I've worked with a firm, the Organically Grown Company, that distributes organic produce, but they do it in trucks that are, you know, all on fossil fuel. Well, they put in mileage meters in the trucks. I know a Prius, you know, and you've probably, if you've ever seen a Prius, it gives you a readout on your gas mileage instantaneously. It's like a game. You want to see how good you can do. All the truck drivers now at their organically grown company are playing a game to see how good they can do. Little things like eliminating idling. Oh, I worked with Northwest Natural, and you know, they have their trucks and they have these manholes, and they have a truck running while they're pumping stuff down, I think it's fresh air, I hope it is, down into the manhole. And they said, well, you know, maybe we put a solar cell on there, maybe we run electric motors, maybe we don't have to have the, you know, fossil fuel burning on that. And Dan, I know you know this, but its facilities use more energy than anybody else. And here's the real benefit. The real payoff is not the energy savings, it's not the water savings, it's the increase in productivity. That you pay a worker 10 times in salary versus the cost of the space that they're renting. And when Oberlin College had Bill McDonough come in, they came back to Bill and they said, you know, we realize that if our absenteeism fell by 10%, the building's free. The building's free. And you're beginning to see that kind of stuff, just 2 or 3% decrease in absenteeism, 5% increase in productivity. Your building's almost free. So when people worry about what's the payback, the payback comes in worker productivity. We've also seen, the Marshawn Group has done studies like this with schools. 15% increase in student scores, you know, from this. Okay, last slide. Let me summarize, three things. Sustainability is a very complex issue. We started talking about what is sustainability. And I would suggest that most of us know what it is, you know, it sustains life. But it is so complex that if you do not have a framework, you'll get lost. And I would say there's no choice about that framework. There's only one, that's nature's framework. I like the Natural Step because I think it's the best articulation of it. But if you have a better way of explaining it, great, go for it. But whatever you do has to align with the basic principles that nature used to design a sustainable planet. That's the first part of playing this game. If you can find a way to express it in a way that everybody understands, now you've got the synergism of a community, you know, to work on it, a shared mental model. The backcasting's the other part. You take that and you envision what your city would look like, what your community would look like, and you keep making decisions based on that long-term model. That's exactly what Whistler has done. If you don't have that, you're going to get lost again. This is where greenwashing comes in, because people say, oh, compact fluorescence, 70% less energy, that's great. Oh, it's got mercury. You're greenwashing. Well, wait a second. Neither one is the right answer. The right answer doesn't have mercury, it's very energy efficient. We may not have the right answer today, but we keep making decisions that lead us there. LEDs probably are going to be a stepping stone to that. So you have to go through the backcast and you have to have the vision so that you can make those trade-offs. But ultimately, this is a cultural shift. This is a different way of thinking. And when you're successful, it's because everybody under, everybody thinks this way. And they think at this way at every level. Everybody in the city would be thinking this way. Every commission would be thinking this way. Will that happen overnight? No. But it's why we're doing, Pete and I are doing the stuff we are with Clackamas County, why we're getting people together. It's why I've gone to Lake Oswego to train their people. It's why I'm gratified to be here. I'm scheduled to sit down with the people in West Lynn. Clackamas County itself is training all of their employees on the Natural Step. This is ultimately, you know, what's required. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. Give me, I've done a lot of talking. Give me feedback. Talk to me. What's your reaction about all this?
I think once, one of the other trainings you'd mentioned, that most cities are behind sustainability because they are in the business of efficiency and savings. But we haven't always articulated what those savings are. So this was beneficial to me to see these other communities discussed, yeah. Particularly McMinnville. I don't know if we're comparable to Whistler, but the other thought I had was, you know, whatever size of community you are, whatever economy you have, there are aspects to this that we can, we can use in having a sick frame.
Who does your waste here? Is it Rossman or?
We have.
Alight Waste maybe?
Yeah.
When we negotiated the agreement with Rossman, and they'd now been bought by Alight Waste, we said, eventually we want to go to zero waste. And we recognize you're not there. And we don't want to put you out of business, you know, but we want you to start thinking differently. Maybe your business is not waste disposal. Maybe your business is not waste disposal. Maybe it's materials management. Now, it may take a while to get there, but we want you to start to think that way.
Right.
I think it's fascinating that, as I hadn't listened and really thought through these things, I think that we already have a philosophical agreement with this body and with the staff. We've had these discussions, and we've talked about it, even when we get down to, well, how's that going to affect that stream down, down long-term? And we've had that, and I'm excited by that, because I think we're already headed a little bit ahead of that. What I find this is interesting is it gives us a really more of a strategic look at it, really, really long-term strategic look. And I'm excited about, I mean, I'm already sitting here, ready to notice, how are we going to implement this? I mean, how can we actually make this happen? And how do we educate the community? And I'm already saying, this presentation needs to be taped off of our system here, and we need to get it to the libraries, and we need to get to the schools, and we need to get people to listen to this and start that education piece now. And I agree with you that the buy-in has to be at the staff level and the city level and at the commission level. I agree with that. But I think it can be done in conjunction, and I think it can be done pretty efficiently and effectively through our school system, through the school board, and do the same kind of thing there. It's an exciting, it's an exciting opportunity for us. And I think that the city, we've already, like I said, I feel like we've mentally accepted it already.
Yeah, well, it's over here, right?
Yeah, sure. Yeah, we just need to, and I think we've been working towards it, but you're right. I mean, I don't think we can take it and take all of this and put it down and say, okay, well, this is our new code. We're not there. But I certainly think we can look at this long-term and put together that strategy and start talking about it in the next two, three years, and have a strategic team put together to make this happen. Or at least make the first step to make it happen. It's an exciting opportunity.
Right, great.
I agree. And I'm sitting here thinking, how can we get this going? And then the next step, I'm thinking about, how do we institutionalize it, as you mentioned, in McMinnville? And I was going right along thinking about the school boards and, you know, at the various levels, how do you do that? Institutionalize it in the long-term, you're going to have to teach it to the children, basically. I mean, not basically, absolutely. But early on, getting the stakeholders, planning commission, elected officials on board with creating those programs.
Well, you guys are in the best position to know how to bring this into your community. I don't live here, so I don't know that. And I would, I would look for your guidance. But we're here to help do this, you know, that's why we got this Clackamas group. So what I would ask you is, at some point in time, carcass and come back and tell us, what's the next step? How do we take this into your community?
And just for your information, the Clackamas group is the Clackamas City and County Working Group, which right now is mostly staff people, but Mayor Norris has come to a couple of the meetings, I think, maybe one. And then there's, we had a really interesting talk from the chair of the Planning Commission of Madison, Wisconsin, who are in the process of implementing their sustainability plan. And they have managed, I think they've managed to train all of their staff in that, too.
They're using the Natural Step, and it's the mayor that's really driving that.
Yeah. So these are all good things.
Going back to Chair Paul's comment, how many school districts or schools, and at what levels, have you been able to share this type of presentation with?
There's, there's an organization called Sustainable Oregon Schools, SOS, maybe Initiative, I'm not sure, but it's on the web. It's being run by Zero Waste Alliance, which is a local group here. And they're using these principles to look initially at school operations. I don't know how many schools they're working with, but they're working with schools all over the state. I worked with Catlin Gable and took them through this ABCD process, so they've got it. I worked with the University of California at Santa Barbara and took them through this same process. I guess that's, I would say this SOSI group would be the one that would have more information about what you're looking for, I think.
So this was just such a unique opportunity for our entire region. I mean, we're at the forefront of this now, and it's just, it's a real exciting time. I mean, to think my little firm is designing a Living Building Challenge building right now is unbelievable.
Are you?
Yeah.
Which one?
It's Eastco Diversified Services. They're out in Gresham, and it's a facility for adults with developmental disabilities. And they came to us, and that's, actually, they came to Neil Kelly.
Yeah, okay.
And Neil Kelly came to us, and so that was their goal, was that. So we're about halfway through the process right now. It's just, it's mind-boggling in a few short years how far we've actually come. And for a facility like that, to understand what that was and to come to other folks and say, this is what we want is, you know, we just have a great opportunity.
That is great.
For the entire region to capitalize on this, too.
Yeah, yeah.
So, pretty exciting stuff.
Yeah, yeah.
So I guess I'm sitting here thinking, what are the next tangible steps we should be moving to make towards that? And thinking that maybe a work session with, and then do we do it with the next city commission and wait till a new mayor and is in order? But I'd like to at least move that process if we could start it tonight.
Well, I think that's a good, it's a good point. I think really what we probably ought to look at is a work session, so we can at least, you know, sit down and really throw these ideas around a lot more, and then come up and say, okay, well, we have, we have staff, we have, we have a plan, or at least an attempt to make a plan. And I personally would like to read a lot more about this now that I'm aware of it, and I've made notes to that I want to do that. So any, I mean, I would be thrilled if you want to give Tony information on what we can read and where we might be able to find the information other than what you've presented tonight. It's a little more in-depth stuff. I would be fascinated by reading that. Before I get into a discussion about this with a work, you know, work session, you know, because I'd like to have a little more background. But I'm fascinated by it. I'm very interested in pursuing it in some fashion.
What is the city's schedule for reviewing the city's comprehensive plan? I mean, it was 2005, I believe, it was updated last?
Every four years.
Every four years, so it seems like it was suggested that that's a, that's a good focus for trying to, trying to institutionalize some of these principles. And I think when you go through your comprehensive plan updates, you're networking with the citizenry, you have workshops, and this type of information could be front and center during that discussion.
Yeah, for sure.
Are there opportunities to apply any of these principles as the city goes through the transportation system plan updates that we endorsed this evening?
I think, yeah, we can certainly, you know, have that, you know, some of these goals and objectives as we're going through that process. I think we're still at the front end of the learning curve here.
Oh, way.
Yeah.
And I think it's pretty good timing with the new city manager, Mr. Fraser, coming on to kind of walk through and put together a more comprehensive plan to try and, if we want to implement this. In the end, it's up to the city commission, you know, how much do they want to be involved, how much will they delegate, how much does city staff get involved? You know, I think that we should probably start there and then try and come up with a plan of how do we start learning and understanding and being able to implement? And where do we start? With just staff and our facilities, and then expand from there as an example, and what, you know, Main Street Citizen Involvement Committee, the business community, how do you, how do we involve them in this process? Really, you know, you need ownership at the elected level in the community to really move this forward, I believe.
I've got some thoughts about that, but I'll hold them because I, again, I'd like to do a little more research, but I've already been thinking about some ways to implement that kind of an education piece initially to get to judge the interest level.
And, you know, as Pete's working with the, with the Green Team here in our city, you know, we can start to bring some of those updates back and what we're learning, what he's learning as he's going through that process as well.
I've also looked through our current comprehensive plan, and we've addressed sustainability in various aspects of the plan. We talk about, you know, the definition that was provided by the Brunel and Commission, not exactly, but talk about what the, that definition of sustainability and what it means for future generations. So that's part of the introduction to the comprehensive plan. And then throughout the plan, there's various goals and policies that, you know, talk about land use. It's a land use plan. But so certainly, each one of the goals and policies that we have in place can always be reviewed through the framework of these system conditions. And I think that's the beauty of the Natural Step workshop, is that you may have things in effect right now, but being able to look at them with, within the context of the system conditions has certainly helped me.
Yeah, that was great.
And I think as you were stating earlier, this has been something the commission, you know, we thought about this. And we did, in the comprehensive plan, is the governor's definition of sustainability in our concept plan right now. And as you may recall, when we went through that process, we were kind of all over the board. You know, there were a lot of different opinions and interpretations and desires. And so I think we took that first step and then kind of got lost in ourselves a little bit, is kind of how I feel when we went through that process. And hopefully, you know, we've taken that first step, and this may be the second step to try and formulate, how are we going to do this now? Because right now, we've got the words out there and some good ideas, and now it's, you know, kind of moving towards the implementation. of moving towards the implementation, which I think would be a great step.
As Duke says, it's going to take a long time.
Well, the comprehensive plan is your 20-year guiding document.
We put so much time and so much involvement from all of us into the current plan, it's almost, I mean, I sit back and think, "Oh, my God, looking at the plan again." But now, I'm excited to look at the plan again.
That's a different meaning.
If I can get the different lens on it and say, "Oh, wow, now let's look at it from this lens."
And I think we're fortunate in that we're in a state and in a community where you already have that tool in place to help you look at those long-term goals and objectives for the direction of your city. We're not reinventing some document that doesn't exist. We just get to incorporate these new ideas and techniques into it. So I think we need, as staff, probably need to do a little bit of work, meeting with the new commissioner, or city manager, and getting direction, and try and come back with the best way to proceed in a holistic effort for the whole staff, directors, city manager, see where the city commission comes out on this, how much they want to be involved. And the amount of effort and time that's going to be put into this, we want to make sure we've got everybody on board and going in the same direction.
What exposure has the city commission had to, have they?
Other than Mayor Norris.
Mayor Norris did attend one of the meetings, but in terms of comprehensive training, you were not there yet. Like Tony says, we need to get our new city manager installed and get some direction.
This was wonderful. Just unbelievable. It just really invigorated my mind.
I appreciate it.
Thanks for your passion on this. It's really good.
Thank you.
Okay, that's excellent. Tony, you said you had something you want to talk to us about?
I was just going to give you some updates on what's been going on and what we have in the near future here. Hopefully, the Planning Commission, City Commission work session to discuss the code is scheduled for Tuesday, April 13th. As soon as we have a better idea of what the agenda looks like, we'll be sure to get that to you. We did have the first hearing in front of the City Commission last week. Very general overview. We were kind of asking them, feel certainly, any questions or comments they have, go ahead and email us, and we would put them into the record. And they did have some requests that we're trying to put together for the work session to be able to bring back to them. But that really, the work session would give us the ability to really walk through that document and the changes that were made. So we didn't go into a whole lot of detail, just started it. We continued it to that date. If anybody wanted to speak, we want to make sure they had that opportunity. Last meeting, we asked about the dredging permit for the Cove and where that was. We have the Department of State Lands permit, and we're just waiting for the final from the Corps of Engineers. But we are planning to do the dredging this summer for the Cove, where the Cove meets the Clackamas River there. So right now, everything looks like we're on track. We're probably going to be going out to bid here in the very near future to get that work done this summer. The farmer's market, the city commission did approve, I think it was $35,000, for the startup of a downtown farmer's market. The proposal is to have the farmer's market close down 8th Street on Wednesdays and Saturdays. The Wednesday market would be roughly closing the street around 1:00 to start at 3:00, running until approximately 7:00, I believe, off the top of my head. Mixed use downtown zone identifies farmer's market, craft, all the types of markets that are in the downtown. If they're prior to 6:00 PM on a weekday, they need to get a conditional use permit. So you will most likely be seeing that in the near future. We've been meeting with the farmer's market representatives and walking them through the process of what they need to do to get that permit for that conditional use. We did have a 68-lot subdivision.
Thayer Road.
Thayer?
Yep.
So you may recall, the same one.
I knew that coming back.
Yep. They're just coming in as a straight subdivision.
Lots of trees.
Yep. So I think that is out for public comment right now.
Yeah. The comment period will be up until April 2nd. And so, 68 lots.
Yep. So you'll also be seeing in the near future a conditional use permit for the Atkinson Church that needed to go in front of the Historic Review Board. Historic Review Board did approve the proposal that was appealed to the city commission. So that'll be going in front of the city commission on April 21st. So we'll probably delay that hearing in front of the Planning Commission until we address that appeal. The Cove has been delayed. The migratory bird issue cannot harm, harass bird nests, bird areas, March 15th through August 15th. The original plan was to limb and some of those trees, all the trees, prior to March 15th. Come back and do the grading once we had our 1,200-seat permit from Department of Environmental Quality. Just wasn't feasible, so that's been delayed till later this summer to potentially start that project if the issues can be addressed at Department of Environmental Quality.
August?
Yes. July, August.
August 15th.
That's when the end of the migratory birds.
Migratory birds.
Correct. First round, DEQ had several red lines. You may have seen some of the comments that were out there. A vast, vast majority of those were technical corrections of these site plans. It is a lot of documents. It's, the first and second rounds of engineering reviews often have several, several red lines associated with them. But the developer is working with DEQ. They've met with them to address their concerns. Commissioner, Chairperson Powell, and the mayor and I will be meeting with a potential candidate for fill the Planning Commission. His name's Charles Kidwell, longtime resident of the city. So hopefully, we'll have something to report back to you the next time we meet. And other than that...
What's the East does on the Danielson rebuild?
We had a pre-application meeting with them last month.
Last month, yep.
Yep. So they have six months to turn in an application. Not sure if you had many communications with them since then.
No. Just comments about the ditch behind the property, Theater Ditch, which is a Title III stream, and how they're going to process the review of that. So far, but...
And David Fraser, as you've probably seen, was accepted a contract for the new city manager, is anticipated to start April 7th. That's okay.
The updates that I have.
I want to add one outstanding question from, I think the last time we met, had to do with, and I didn't check into it, whether or not the system development charges for parks had been adjusted...
They have not been.
When they did their comprehensive plan.
They have not been adjusted.
Was that because they decided that we have enough parks already and they didn't need additional capital?
I think that, as you may recall, when we were doing, I think that it wasn't, that process was more of a five-year plan for addressing maintenance and staffing issues.
That was 2007, right?
I believe so, yeah.
It's four years ago now.
Yep. And it wasn't a complete rewrite of the Parks and Rec master plan. And I think that there was some miscommunication on how we titled that process. And it was more meant to be an implementation strategy rather than a 20-year master plan for Parks and Rec. So, no, I confirmed that with Scott Archer, that the system development charges have not been updated.
Thank you.
That was an outstanding question. Congratulations. All right, we get any other questions or any updates or anything? All right, well, thank you again. I appreciate it, and we are adjourned.